Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good to see everyone. Happy September today. We're in September while the months fly by and nothing. We've got September Saturdays coming up in a couple of weeks. We look forward to that. We can have anyone to sign up for public comment. So we'll jump right into the agenda. If you'll review the commission meeting minutes of August eighteenth, uh, August sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, as well as work session minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. We have a proclamation under tab three declaring the month of September Tuesday, two thousand sixteen, as PTA membership enrollment in Douglas County. And, uh, Peter will be here to read that proclamation. We also have a resolution under tab four authorizing, uh, the adoption of a resolution extending the Southwood Southwest Fortin Road Activity Center temporary moratorium until March twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, to allow for the completion of the study that we have underway for that area. Trace, do you want to add anything to that?
It's just that we've gotten a much better timeline from the consultant hired by the Development Authority and I've included it with the packet. So in order to help that study stay on task, we know we're going to need to extend the moratorium. So we thought since we had that timeline available, that we would just go ahead and take care of that extension to facilitate that study.
Okay, that's through March second third, two thousand seventeen. Any, has there been any feedback from the community at all regarding this or?
I would turn that over to Chris since he's managing the consultant to tell you where they are in the process and where they're next to be in the timeline.
Chris?
Sure. So to date, the consultant has completed, they've broken, they have the timeline. So in the timeline, they've completed phase one, which is basically the land suitability analysis. And I don't know if the market study was involved at that point in time. But they'll be kind of reviewing with us week after next, kind of what that phase one kind of portion was. September is phase two, where we start our stakeholder interviews. And then towards the end of the month is when we get into the public input portion of the study. So to answer your question, the public has not been brought in just yet into the process.
The only reason I have is we're commencing our annual budget process. We're just trying to anticipate those things, our short-term, those things, and maybe long-term, and just simply trying to get a feel for the timeline that you explained. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. In County administrative business this morning?
Yes, sir.
Business under tab five, authorization to extend the NSP one program in Douglas County until September fifth, two thousand seventeen, as required by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Trace?
And it's just an annual housekeeping lever to DCA to continue the NSP one program in Douglas County, who we had overdue at this time of year. So it's just a request that's forwarded from the Department of Community Affairs.
I have questions. So a couple of months ago, I don't know when it was, I had the opportunity to travel around with our community service bureau to various assets that were owned by the Cobb side of it for, I guess, felony courts. And we looked at properties in Anwaki, properties in Mirror Lake, properties in somewhere in the city of Douglas. And how they went about acquiring those properties with the use of NSP dollars. And I couldn't recall, but it's something I've kind of been sure to hand the chairman, of course, we're there on this tour. The question is, can NSP dollars be used to acquire properties to be used for mental health court, felony drug court, et cetera? And I'm disclaiming this ahead of time, it's not a trick question, because they used it for it. And I'm just curious why we couldn't, was there some type of prohibition within our application that we said that we didn't want to do it that way?
For those properties that you saw, we did do some research with DCA and found that there was a separate application process for those types of funds that posed the question if there was anything in our current NSP setup that could potentially facilitate something like that. And DCA is taking that question under advisement to give us back an answer if there's anything we can do under these particular NSP dollars that might facilitate something like that. So we posed the question and are just waiting for an answer from DCA.
Dylan, how is it? Okay. All right. I'm looking for an answer.
Good, thank you. Under tab six, authorization to accept funds from the Clerk of State Court Technology Fund account, the amount of two hundred twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents to be used for the purchase of the scanner for the accountability courts. Tammy, you?
She asked, and I'm...
All right. You're going to jump on that one?
Yes. You pretty much said it. There's really not much more other than they do have their own state court technology fund account that she oversees, and she has to get usually a court order from Judge Detmering or a state court judge, and that is also attached. And they just need this scanner in order for it to go into the accountability court's operations.
Okay. Talking that we do.
Yes.
Okay. Under tab seven, authorization to accept a check from the law library in the amount of four thousand dollars for the purchase of chairs in the clerk's office. Do you want to do that with it?
Yes, sir. This is paying for half the cost to replace forty-four chairs. Half the cost is going to be coming out of the clerk's budget, and then the law library is paying the other half. And they have passed that in their minutes as well, the law library board.
We go chairs and pretty bad chairs.
Yes.
Okay. Tab number eight, authorization to accept a check from the law library in the amount of four thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for the purchase of Elmo TVs and stands for the state court.
Okay. What Elmos are, for everybody that may not know, are like a modern day projector. Is that correct?
I didn't know what it was either. I could ask more on what that was.
These will be utilized by attorneys in two state courtrooms to display documents and other objects used as exhibits for evidence. So it's no cost to the county, it's directly coming from the law library funds.
Okay. Under tab nine, authorization to solicit bids for the two thousand sixteen tans in the amount of three million dollars. And the purpose of this item on the agenda is the lack of a tax digest being approved by, and Todd's here with us, I'm glad, because this is kind of new to all of us, first time I've been through something like this in not many years here. But Carroll County has not approved their tax digest, which impacts all of the cities within Carroll County, Villareca being one of those. And we have been in communication with the City of Villareca, and we're told that they would approve, I think, what, I don't know what they call it, it would be adopt their millage rate of last year. And they have to go through the Superior Court in Carroll County to do that. They were going to adopt their millage rate tonight, now they've put it off until next week. So that is the purpose of this being on our agenda. We don't know if we will have to borrow tans or not, this contingent on when they approve, Carroll County approves their digest, or if Villareca gets the approval of adopting their current millage rate. Is there anything, Todd, anything else we can add to that?
You've pretty much covered it. Since Villareca's taxes are collected by Carroll County and Douglas County, any delays for Villareca means a delay for Douglas County actually sending out our tax bills. We've been approved for the State of Georgia, we've done everything we can do up to this point, until we get a final millage rate from Villareca. At that point, I've got to run final calculations on the, all the bills within the Villareca district inside of Douglas County. Actually, I have to recalculate the whole digest, but those are the only bills that will be adjusted with this final calculation. Then there's a lot of steps we have to go through to get things ready before we can send our digest to the printing and mailing vendor. We've been in conversation with the printing and mailing vendor, they're willing to work weekends, evenings, whatever, to help us turn this around as quickly as possible. And of course, my office is willing to work weekends and evenings as well, and had already planned on that in order to get the tax bills out on time. Unfortunately, this additional five days delay is going to cause a five-day delay, actually a six-day delay in getting the tax bills out. The reason why, five days ends on a Sunday, and, you know, we'll work weekends, but the post office is not going to work on Sunday to get the bills out, so it'll be Monday. So the result will be a six-day delay, assuming they get approval from Carroll County. The only way Villareca can adopt a millage rate on the sixth is if Carroll County has less than eight percent appeals. And that's based on the number of parcels and the dollar volume of their appeals compared to the digest. If that happens, if their appeals go above that eight percent for both parcel count and dollar volume, then Villareca has to go the court route and get a temporary collection order through the courts, and that'll take an additional ten days, which is going to push my billing to the end of September, and it'll push my due date to the end of November. So, you know, and that's assuming the temporary collection order gets granted and goes through properly. We've never had to do that before in Douglas County, and nor has any of the cities that we collect for. So this is new for us as well. So I personally think it's very wise for the county to take this step and look at the possibility of tans in case something were to come up and it potentially delay our billing even a little bit more. But this is not finalized yet, it's kind of still up in the air. I do feel like Villareca has taken all the steps that they can to try to address what's happened in Carroll County. They're kind of, you know, at the mercy of Carroll County, just like us.
This is certainly a cautionary measure that we're having to take. It was brought before the Finance Committee, and you will have a copy of the recommendations from the Finance Committee as for us to start the process, not saying that we will be borrowing money, but it's out of our hands. And when we can send out tax bills, we don't know that yet. So this will be a process, a cautionary process that we feel like we need to take. Yes, sir.
I have questions for Todd. This can't be a unique situation in the state of Georgia, I don't think. Maybe it is, but I would think this kind of thing has happened before, where kind of third parties are out of bill calculations and mailing and so forth. Do you see any way, from your personal opinion, that the state legislature could address this kind of situation, either on a projected basis and go ahead and proceed forward? I'm talking about in years to come, not this year, because it's too late. Do you see any solution to a situation like this?
I can think of several different approaches the legislature could take to address this. In fact, in years past, before some recent law changes, Carroll County could have moved forward, even with the eight percent or higher appeals, provided the county chairman, the county school board superintendent in Carroll County, and those cities sign off and agree and understand that the appeal rate is higher than this. But the law was changed recently that restricts the state from issuing a collection order to Carroll County if those appeals are higher than eight percent, no matter what. So there's a recent law change that kind of tied their hands a little bit. Otherwise, this would not be as much of an issue, in my opinion, it would not hold them back completely without the temporary collection order through the courts. So there is, that and some other avenues, some ways to approach it. Sure, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll have some discussion later on that.
Absolutely. Before the General Assembly goes back into business, it's worth a year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Forums.
Thank you, sir. You know, this, and I appreciate the Tax Commissioner being here, and this is the topic that we talked about in our Finance Committee, and it was one of those where we appreciate municipalities that are involved in this, but in the Finance Committee, our focus is just about Douglas County. Because we've got to make this, we've got to make our own decisions and protect ourselves against decisions that we can't control. And so it was one of those where we're always taking the position to make a recommendation from the Finance Committee, the full board, to pursue tans as just sort of a precautionary measure, right? It was just to hedge ourselves, that, okay, what if this doesn't come through? What could happen to Douglas County? Could we come up short in any way? And that was important for us to sort of just protect ourselves in the sense that it may not come down to this, but I don't want to have this conversation a month from now, or two months from now, because we were waiting on some other jurisdiction to get there, to get it together, and we're exposed. We worked too hard to get to this place, and having solid cash flow to all of a sudden not be able to forecast this, right? This, you know, I can't see, but I can see, like, okay, we're going to miss this if we don't do this right. So it was important for us to consider this, and so all of y'all need to understand, this is precautionary. We didn't have to, but we just want, it's almost like an insurance policy. It's good to have one, and not need it, then to need it, and then all of a sudden, oh, oops, we didn't, we didn't do this right. All right? So this is, I know we're sort of solemn with what this is, but this is, this is pretty serious. All right? We're standing here waiting on somebody else to, and you keep hearing the timeline slip. Well, they're going to have a meeting here, we're going to have a meeting there. That's political, guys. We don't know what's going to happen. Now, it's not against us, but it's that we can't control their politics no more than anybody can control ours. So I yield back, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that there was a lot of conversation within that Finance Committee on, you know, how much we should do and when we should do this, and making sure that we're properly protected, and I just want to acknowledge that in that conversation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Doesn't cost a taxpayer the dime if we don't borrow any money. It's cautionary, as the President said.
That's what I was going to mention, is that these tans are different than what we've done in the past. Where in the past, where we knew that there was definite going to be a need for it, we would go out to bid, we would get the proceeds, we would close and we would get the proceeds. These tans are what I would call, in layman's terms, withdrawal tans, meaning that we're going through the process of the normal purchasing process, make sure all banks are contacted, that the banks are going to be made aware that this is if it's needed, meaning that we're going to have everything set up for it to borrow up to three million. And if everything goes like we hope, and there's not that much of a delay, then we still have the opportunity to borrow, but if we don't, does it cost us anything? There's no legal fees, there's no interest costs, there's nothing. It's just, for lack of a better word, even though governments can't legally do this, it's kind of like a line of credit. You're opening up a line of credit just in case it's needed. And so that's where it's different, where we're not asking authorization to go out for tans, and we're going to get three million dollars by the next commission meeting. It's just opening it up, set up where it is of value to us if needed.
This is called responsibility, a little comment.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, number ten, authorization to water contract to South Beach Glass Inc. for the exterior glass window cleaning and restoration for the Douglas County Courthouse, for a total cost of one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Though that sounds like a lot of money to clean windows.
It is. We have a lot of windows. And if you...
But there's another process we have to talk about here.
If you walk around the courthouse and visited many of the floors of the courthouse and looked out the windows, you will not get a clear view. Because of some of the processes that have been used in the past with the windows, they've become etched and are no longer clear, or foggy, they're even being looked at for scratch marks on them. We went through a process of trying to find a professional firm that could come in to do the work, obviously bid it out, got five good bids and back in. We had three of the companies come out and actually demonstrate the process they would use. Then there was a judgment of those three processes by Mr. Mark Price, and James, and myself, and we all three chose what we thought was the best process that would give us the best result. It's not the cheapest, but it is a full scope of process. They don't not only clean the windows, but they're going to have to clean all the aluminum around the windows, and all the trim, the dirt, everything, re-caulk. So it's not just coming in and washing the windows, it's a much more complicated process that South Beach uses, and we feel very confident that they can do a great job, and it will be a lasting job. It's not something we're going to have to turn around and do again in two or three years.
And we get budget mark, total of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Yes, sir. Very good. This is below the...
Comments, questions? Yes, sir.
And Mr. Price is here, if you have any questions as well.
Just kind of go a little bit to the process in the background now. You know, we pressure washed the courthouse. Comments were made that Billy Bob could have come out here and done it for five thousand dollars with a pressure washer. But what are the liability and insurance and other factors that enter into a commercial professional company coming in to do this work compared to Billy Bob?
Obviously, it's warranted, and we will require that the firm, they've provided us their insured certification, so they are insured for the work that they do. We have, do you have any other thing you want to say about that, probably?
Well, this company, though they're new to the county, they've been in this business for thirty-plus years in high-rise service business, and they, they're very experienced in using scaffolding and platforming lifts, and have all the confidence in the world that they'll be safe. And we'll also get our Matt LeVerne involved and make sure everything meets his approval.
Okay, so it's more than just standing on a ladder?
Oh, yes, sir. They're going to be doing drops inside of the building on some staging equipment, probably some lifts in some of the medium areas. It'll be, it'll be a pretty long process, I expect it to take about a month. It's a very labor-intensive mechanical process.
It is a restoration, so I understand.
Yes, sir.
The hardware and the frames and so forth. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Under tab eleven, authorization to accept grant funds in the amount of two thousand dollars and amend the entire department budget. Chief Spencer?
Yes, sir. Several work sessions ago, I brought this before the board, and y'all approved for us to try to get this grant. It was from Norfolk Southern Railroad, and we were successful, they sent us a check for two thousand dollars. It's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Number twelve, authorization to apply for the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, two thousand sixteen recreational trails grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to be utilized at the new park currently known as the Boot Bear Creek property located on Punkin Town Road. Mr. Duke, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, sir. We're requesting authorization to apply for this grant, up to a hundred thousand dollars through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. It is an in-kind match of twenty percent, so we can, we're well on our way to matching twenty percent already. So we've turned it over to the grant folks, and they will be applying for the fund.
Money already standing to be applied toward that twenty percent match?
In-kind services.
Yes, in-kind.
In-kind.
Yes, sir.
It's, thank you, sir. In this case, bike trails, what does that entail here? What does that look like?
This is, this property is going to be used for just hiking trails.
Just hiking trails?
Hiking.
Hiking, okay, hike trails.
Yes, sir.
All right, so what does that mean? What does that look like? I mean, how do you, because it's supposed to be a conservation to a certain extent, what is, how do you create a hiking trail?
Well, hiking trail will be cut, a lot of the roads that are already on the property were established years ago. So we will be adding to the existing trails. And we would want those trails wide enough to accommodate a small utility vehicle in case we had an emergency, but nothing larger than six to eight feet wide.
But we've got to keep it natural, right?
Yes.
With the whole thing, conservation.
It will be a preserve or natural state.
And just augment Mr. Duke's comments is, you just don't go out there and clear brush and call it a trail, you really have to look at your contours so that you don't exacerbate erosion to the property. I walked out there last week with our consulting engineer, Mr. Duke, I got eat up with chiggers. I give that up for the county.
We need to have it repaid, we don't have it out there to be.
I sacrifice that part for the county. But the fact that our consulting engineer is providing us with a master plan without cost is going to aid and abet our ability to get this grant. So I'm very hopeful that we'll get this grant using this match plan. When you ask for money, they want to know what you're going to do with it, and we'll be able to show them precisely what we're going to do with it.
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need a bridge, and we'll need some parking areas. We'll also need signage, the construction of the trail, a compost restroom, those are just some of the things that potentially the grant money can be spent on.
And two more points, Mr. Chairman. Number one, I did talk to the sheriff about some in-kind contribution of labor as far as helping to clear, to clear some of the trails. And I want to share the tentative master plan with the commissioners as soon as we get it, but we looked at it on site and had some suggestions, so they're kind of modifying their preliminary master plan as soon as we accept this little firm. But we'll roll that out to the commissioners, and then we'll have a public meeting as well later on. So back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
And Hughes Ray Company, Mr. Chairman, is the engineering firm.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that.
No cost.
Absolutely.
And it is a beautiful piece of property.
It is. Got a lot of chiggers, though.
I'll attest to that.
Okay. Number thirteen, authorization to approve a master services agreement between the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and Comcast Business for the implementation, installation, and servicing of high-speed network circuits in the courthouse and various off-site facilities, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Russ?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is, this is really just kind of an umbrella agreement with Comcast Business, not to be confused with Consumer Comcast. I know that name runs concerns people sometimes about service. Comcast Business offers us something that our current provider doesn't, which is a four-hour SLA and new technology versus a really old legacy T-one technology that we're using now, and a twenty-four hour SLA. So this is to, there's no sales order attached to this just yet. We're still giving our current provider an opportunity to quote out several locations so that we know that we're making the right financial decision. So this, this just puts us in a position where we can start executing sales orders with Comcast to transition these circuits from the T-ones that we have now to Ethernet over coax technology that they use.
From slow service to fast service.
It goes from meg and a half to ten mags. It's also a current technology that's currently being built out and serviced as opposed to T-one technology, which AT&amp;T is actually trying to get away from. So it just puts us in a better position for the future, increases speed, we've got some reliability issues at some of the parks and fire stations with the current technology. This fixes that issue. It's been a big concern for elections, that we have intermittent service problems in some of the locations where they try to do early voting. It's caused us a couple of issues in the past. Chief Spencer's had some issue with trying to train firefighters at their location because we just don't have the bandwidth at the locations to work, to keep them in-house doing online training. So this addresses several of those things. It's also something that we can do pretty much with a straight across budget. It's never really increased for us in the way.
And Chief, that is an advantage for our firefighters that can stay in their posts.
Yes, sir. It, a lot of our training we do online, they can watch videos and stuff, and I had to get Russ to explain it to me in terms I could explain to my staff. So if you think of a garden hose, that's what we've got now in fire stations, and we're going to basically a fire hydrant size water main for information into the fire station.
Break it up now, we all understand.
Yeah. That's the way I had it. So...
Yes, sir. Mr. Ramsay?
Thank you, sir. And this is, and I'm okay with whoever answers it, Russ, our, a couple of months ago, we had, it was a presentation to us about technology, and specifically for the future, and I know the chairman sort of pushed back and said, we're the technology committee, members are here to talk about it, so it's okay. But, but when I hear, and again, I don't know the difference, and that was the point of going to look at a study, which was, okay, Google Fiber, AT&amp;T, whatever, 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 all these different providers, and we've got a solution for us here locally that we're working on. But the premise behind economic development and everything else was, what about the public at large, right? If we're in here solving problems for ourselves, we're proving technology for the same providers that provide for consumers, I'm looking for who's aligning this, this strategy, right? When we ask questions of why can't, I mean, we've got somebody out here who's Wi-Fi-ing parks and certain buildings, and then we've got this, and I'm hearing these disparate, you know, point solutions, I'm sitting here like, okay, there's got to be a better, a better play. I'm more holistic, we're only a hundred and ninety square miles, we have a small footprint, right? And I'm hearing what we're doing for ourselves internally, but I'm, I'm going to push, and this is where I was going with this, is that where are we in least looking at a bigger solution for Douglas County, not just Douglas County workforce? If somebody asks... Can somebody answer that?
I don't know if they can or not.
And again, to my point, again, I'm sensitive that neither the technology, Mr. Chairman, I know you pushed it back there, so this came up independent of not knowing they were here.
Well, the reason I brought up the Technology Committee, because they're not here today. But I assume this has been reviewed with the Technology Committee as well.
Yes, the Comcast piece has. And to Commissioner Robinson, with the, with the presentation we did earlier, and that going kind of back into the Technology Committee, we don't meet that often every, every other month. But that was one of the charges from the Technology Committee when we met last, was to continue to investigate community-based fiber, something that we would push out to our residents. But do it in an incremental way, where we're looking at success stories of other communities and how they did it, gathering additional information about what they did and how they did it, and see how that's relevant for us, so that we can begin to draw some conclusions about what we could do and try to determine what we should do.
And so our solution may not be the solution for consumers. So will I be superior to what's pitched out to consumers or not? I mean, I'm just curious, are we the pilot for the consumer? Are we going to take our learning and share it? I'm just, I'm still trying to, you know, if there's something that's going to go forth that the consumers will have a better play, I would rather have what the consumer has. But if we've got a better play, are we going to share that? Or is this some type of like national security, like our stuff is separate than everybody else? And I'm okay if that's the answer, just say so.
That doesn't have to be the answer anymore.
Okay.
Yes, software by networking allows us to do things across the same medium. Other consumers can do it and still completely protected. At the same time, what we're proposing here is absolutely just a solution that Comcast has generally available to businesses. It meets the requirements that we have for security and throughput. And so we're going to, in, in the meantime, until we come up with this master plan and start deploying massive amounts of fiber cable in the ground, for us and the consumer, we have to use what's available, and this is what's available to us right now.
Understood. Again, I'm just standing here for my technology colleagues. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Bobby Humble is here this morning, so I'm going to ask him that. Recently, this board approved the purchase of a body camera. And I think we're all over the process of having those come in. Would you talk a little bit about that, Bobby?
We are. I wanted to make sure that y'all understand, I believe, I can't remember what month it was when we actually decided to make the purchase. But in the process, there was a good body camera, and then there was a better body camera that came out from L3. We chose L3 because that was our patrol property. A better, better battery system and a better camera. So we opted to go with the better one, well, that caused the delay initially there. And then with lots of agencies, apparently, who were looking at cameras, we got backed up into the, into the line, I guess is a better way to say it. But the news I got for y'all today, and I found this out earlier this week, the body cameras are due in the middle of September. We should receive those. We were initially told that we were probably going to get them in batches, 20, 30, whatever, because of the demand. We're, I'm being told at this time that we may get all 160 at one time. If we get that, 85 of those, I believe is the count we had in the uniform patrol and the traffic units, they will go after them first. A timeframe on that, there's a training that's got to happen. Storage is already in place. All we're doing is been waiting on the body cameras. So I would anticipate a first October, I'll be safe. I won't mention nothing in September. If they come in the middle of September, we should be functional by the first of October. Of those 160, once we get those 80, roughly 85 out, they're going to go to uniformed officers, whether it be warrant, civil folks that are out in uniform, out in the streets in the county. I anticipate us doing this program, and then at a point in time, there may be a reevaluation and we may need some more body cameras, I don't know. We've got 371 positions at the sheriff's office. Obviously, I believe we're at about 200, maybe 400 positions or something. So we'll just kind of take that as it goes. And, because I'm not 100% sure if we did it for a skilled resource officer or anything of that nature, so. But the first delivery, we hope, and this is probably the best estimate I've been given, is in the middle of September. So I just want to make sure that we're.
You mentioned stories in place. That was one of the questions we had before we approved the purchase of these. Cost and availability, we have that in place now, yes, sir?
Yeah, we, patrol body cameras that we have every year are L3. And so we decided to go with L3 body cameras because the same storage is going to be used for both of them. That's what we did, was we just increased in order, the storage to accommodate for the body cameras. We had, we had a delay in that where we had this server come in. These servers are about $30,000, we lost the settlement. It came in from delivery and it was destroyed by one of our carriers. I won't mention what carrier, just to name them, but. We had it reordered and another one came, and it was destroyed. So on the third time, I was kind of like, L3 needs to probably come out here themselves and hand deliver it. But we got it in, and we got it functioning, and it's ready to go with the body cameras.
Any questions?
Yes, Robinson. And I, you know, one, I'd like to thank our full board commissioners who actually backed the funding of this last year and last year's budget. You guys were, made the decision to move forward with this. I think, you know, transparency, you know, we as a board commissioners are constantly held, you know, to the transparency mantra. But I appreciate the sheriff's office saying that, you know, we have an integrity organization. We are okay with being accountable. This is a big step moving forward for the county. You know, we've been doing patrol cars for quite, quite some time, to your point. And this is just sort of an extension of that. But this, this is important. We, I mean, you have some jurisdictions that run from this. They don't, they don't want to adopt this. But I appreciate what sheriff's messages is being sent, that says, look, come, look, we have evidence. And we have supporting evidence that these cameras, when you see that video, it goes a long way in what they call law enforcement today, right? It's an added piece. It obviously doesn't take everything. But nonetheless, I appreciate this, Mr. Chairman, because it just stands that we stand behind our work. What we say is gold, and we put this camera right here, and it'll back it. So I just want to thank you guys for adopting this. I know it's a process. It is what it is. And so any support you guys need by way of, you let us know. Mr. Chairman, I yield, sir.
Bobby, thank you for being here to give us updates.
You're welcome.
All right, so when did the executive session?
No, sir.
All right, well, unless there's any other business, go before the board. We stand here.